Well, hello and welcome to the April Macomb Park Board of Commissioners meeting. And as always, we will start with the approval of the agenda.
I would like to approve the agenda.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the agenda stands approved. Consideration of and actions on the minutes from March. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions?
Moved to approve.
All right, it's been moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And minutes stand approved. Bills and transfers and monthly financial statements, Commissioner Hamm.
Thank you. For March, the consolidated fund, the cash on hand at the end of the month is $210,656. We ended the month $22,414 below budget expectations. Year-to-date is $1,436 below budget. For the general fund, we ended March with $303,994 and some change. Cash on hand. Overall, for the end of the month, we're $10,936 better than budget projections. And year-to-date, we're $24,530 ahead of budget. Corporate. Let's see. We ended the month $1,987 better than budget. And year-to-date, $8,000, or excuse me, $8,324 ahead of budget. For recreation, overall, we ended the month $854 ahead of budget. Year-to-date, $997 ahead of budget projections. For Lakeview, overall for the month, ended $326 better than budget. And $1,030 ahead for the year-to-date. Ball Four, the month, ended $49 above budget. Year-to-date is $1,323 below budget. The Special Rec, overall revenues. Excuse me, overall, we are $972 better than the budget expectations for the month. And year-to-date is $3,344 better than budget. Within Special Rec, the program events. The overall, we ended the month $49 better than budget. Year-to-date, $782 better than budget. The Special Olympics, overall, ended the month $993 better than budget. Year-to-date, $2,167 better than the budget. Non-activities, we ended, overall for the month, $31 less than the predicted budget. But for the year-to-date, we are $696 better than the budget projections. Police, overall for the month, were $466 better than budget. Year-to-date is $596 ahead of the budget. For payroll, the wages ended $7,077 below budget for the month. And year-to-date is $19,571 below budget. Finally, I would like to mention that we did receive $21,833 in personal property replacement tax check on April 9th, 2021.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Are there any questions for Commissioner Hamm? All right. No questions. Motion to approve the bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements.
Make a motion to approve those items.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway?
Aye.
All right, and bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements stand approved as published. Looks like we do not have anyone for the open public presentations to the commissioners. So we'll move on to item number five, President's Report. First off, congratulations to Emily and Russ on retaining their seat. And I'm looking forward to the swearing-in of Commissioner Gamage and Commissioner Hamm at our May meeting. Dale Atkins has declined to take the seat for the board. So that said, if there is someone interested in filling that seat, to please reach out to the secretary, which is Rachel, to receive more information on that. Also, we're still expecting, or accepting recommendations for the Macomb Park Board of Commissioners lawyer. If there are any interested parties, to please contact me or the board secretary. Again, that would be Rachel. Which reminds me. That to give you. And finally, next month, we will have our annual audit presentation with Skitch LLP. And I'm looking forward to hearing from them and to find out how to properly pronounce their name. That will be really nice to actually know how to pronounce their name. All right, so that's all I had. So moving on to the Director's Report.
Here, here, for the pronunciation of that organization. We have a lot of moving pieces happening right now, which is exciting. It's great to see the park district back in full of life and just everybody. I think finding some new renewed, I should say, purpose and drive in all the positions. So our Push for Parks campaign continues to be going strong. Forgot Tonya, if you remember, they created the Barks and Rec Blueberry Blonde Ale. And they've decided that until it runs out, they will continue to do the Push for Parks campaign through the end of their kegs. So we thank you for, thank them for their continued support and for that ongoing fundraiser for us. That is absolutely fantastic. There is still a little over a week and a half to go get your shoes at Brown Shoe Fit in Macomb. I think I told you guys last time, there were three brands of shoes. They were going to donate $5 per pair sold. And upon our campaign beginning, they just decided to do any athletic shoe. So any athletic shoe in Brown Shoe Fit. If you purchase it, $5 will go to the Patent Park Project. So another generous community organization investing back into this community project. So we're very grateful for them and their involvement and support. So go out and support Brown Shoe. And then, last but not least, for the Push for Parks section, anyway. Our next Push for Parks partner is Magnolias. They are coming back in and doing another burger deal for the campaign. So the Ballpark Burger with your choice of side, $14. $3 goes to the Patent Park Project. So we thank Lisa and her staff for their continued support over the last several years. And excited to bring back that campaign and that Push for Parks deal. So, and then there is more on the horizon. We already have a business set up for June, but we'll wait and save that announcement until May to continue to give our current partners their spotlight. Speaking of Patent Park, if you've driven past Patent Park, it looks a little bit more of a mess than it normally does. Construction has begun on the parking lot area in front of the new dog park. So please use caution if you are a parkgoer when you go over there. There's a pile of blacktop sitting just across the way of the parking area. You know, just a giant hole will be there soon, so please watch your step. And then beyond that, we've been doing a lot of work in preparing to place the new dog park fencing and getting all the water lines put in for the fountains and whatnot. So just use caution when you're over on that side of the park. There is a lot going on, but we're excited that there's a lot going on. That means there's a lot of progress being made. We are hoping that the fencing will go up shortly after the concrete is poured, which the concrete for the parking area is set to be poured the first week of May, around May 3rd. So that'll be exciting. Maybe have a little extra security that day to make sure there's no handprints in the concrete that day. But, and then I did touch base with our playground installer just at the end of the day today. She is hopeful that she will get two crews to come to Macomb the week of May 24th to begin installation of the pathway for play. So those four playground pockets. So very excited to get those in the ground and start preparations for kiddos to be able to play on the new equipment. That is, and it should go without saying, on a day like today, weather-dependent. Things like snow will put us behind a little bit. So little flexibility for them, but that is the hope at current moment. Ball Four Family Entertainment Center is opening. We are kicking off our opening day with a par tee. P-A-R-T-E-E. Well done, Armstrong. The par tee is happening Saturday, May 1st, from 1:00 to 10:00. $1 mini golf all day. That is just again for that opening day. Squeezed Please Lemonade will be on-site from 3:00 to 8:00 with some of her usual delicious goods at a reasonable price. And that'll be just a great time to come out and kick off the season and do something fun and come enjoy Ball Four Family Entertainment Center again. Those seasonal hours are Friday from 5:00 to 10:00, Saturday from 1:00 to 10:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00. So excited to bring the community back over to that facility and get some life back in that space again. Again, it goes without saying, I would imagine at this point, but we are still following all CDC guidelines. So, you know, social distancing and masking when you're going inside is still required. But again, excited to have everybody out to Ball Four when it opens again on May 1st. Everly Park, quick update on that. The construction does seem to be complete in Everly Park, so that's exciting. We did a quick little, just look over to make sure that everything seemed kosher with the finishing up of putting the ground back where it goes, and everything looks very good. So glad that the city was able to get that done in such a timely manner. And also, we will have a new resident over in Everly Park. The park district back before COVID hit did purchase a Rocky On Parade dog. And it was delayed quite a bit because of COVID. So we finally were able to get our pick of a dog and an artist, and we got Monet's Water Lily Rocky Dog, which is quite fitting seeing how it will be right next to the Everly Pond. But very excited about that and excited to have another connection with the university and get to work with their artists. So, yeah, we did do a poll with all the staff. So this was by far the highest picked of the different options that we had been put out there. So excited we got it. I was nervous. Lakeview, there is another Leave No Trace workshop at Lakeview on Saturday, May 1st, from 1:00 to 2:30. So you can make it a full park district day. Go out to Lakeview from 1:00 to 2:30 and head on out to Ball Four around 3. Get yourself a snack from Squeezed Please Lemonade and enjoy a round of mini golf for just a dollar. I'm just telling you, it's a full day. And that workshop is free. So another great opportunity brought to us by one of our graduate assistants. I want to give a shout-out to IPD. I got to attend their Labor and Employment Outlook webinar. A lot of extremely valuable information. And again, I always want to thank them for being on top of and ahead of, you know, what's coming and keeping their members well-informed. So a lot for us to be aware of in the era of COVID, how things are moving forward with employment laws. But, yeah, big shout-out to them and thanks for that. And then, last but not least, just to give you guys some updates on events. We are finalizing details for our first round of events. Currently, we are anticipating still having movies in the park. They will be the drive-in-style movie again. So, but, you know, it's a big park. If people want to bring blankets or lawn chairs and sit out in front of their cars, by all means. I think most people did that last year. So those will be starting in June. Randolph Streets are going to be happening again. We will have some different guidelines to make sure people are practicing safe social distancing, but it is outside, so we get a, you know, there's an air of flexibility in that regard because we're not locked in four walls. So we're excited to have that coming back. And yes, much more on the horizon. And then my final announcement for events. I have hired the next Superintendent of Events. If you remember, our development coordinator, who just recently left us, Carissa Hagan, has decided that the Sunshine State is just not what she wanted. Well, I guess that's California, isn't it?
It's okay.
It's fine.
It's hot there, too.
It is. So Carissa Hagan will be coming back from Florida and joining us as our event superintendent. Very excited to have her coming all this way to be part of Macomb. But just a testament to Macomb and how it really makes people feel like they're part of a family and a community. So.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Wonderful. I have a couple of questions for you.
Oh, good. Okay.
Do we have a total thus far from the Push for Parks, how we're at?
We don't. Because of there being two of them outstanding still. Do you remember what yours was?
Four something, I think. Not positive on the exact amount.
I'm trying to remember what the other two were. The Bold House was one of them. I can get that for you.
That's okay. I was just curious.
I'll try to give you guys an update on that next time.
And can folks still order and purchase the, I believe they were called stone, those stone prints?
Impression stones.
Yes, for the, for the dog park.
Yes. Yep.
And how do they do that?
You can go online. So if you go to the macombparkdistrict.com, there is a button at the top. Actually, there is a bar that pops up when you first enter the website with a cute little dog that says, "Check out our Push for Parks or the Patent Park Project." So you can click that. It'll take you to the page with all of the details. And at the very bottom are all the ways that you can get involved. So if you want to be a Push for Parks partner, if you want to get an impression stone, a tribute tree or a memorial bench, all that information is listed there at the bottom.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much, Rachel.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions for Director Lynn?
Just quickly, you would be able to help someone in the office if they wanted to go online and?
Oh, absolutely.
And do the?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. If you'd rather not go online, we have all that information at our Program Central Station, which is right, the table right when you walk in to the park district.
Okay.
All that information. Yep. Good question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Very good. Well, thank you, Rachel.
You're very welcome.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. Item number seven, consideration and action on Resolution 21-5. All right, just going to go right into this. Resolution 21-5 in commendation and appreciation of Commissioner John L. Hemingway for his years of service. Whereas on July 17th, 2007, the Macomb Park District Board appointed John L. Hemingway to serve on the Macomb Park District Board of Commissioners. And whereas Commissioner Hemingway served as Park Board President from September 2011 through January 2019, as well as Vice President from January 2019 through June 2020. And whereas during Commissioner Hemingway's service, the Macomb Park District underwent major expansion and development. And whereas Commissioner Hemingway's background and experience, together with his leadership, knowledge, and dedication to serve his community, has made critical contributions to the district's advancement. And whereas Commissioner Hemingway has consistently demonstrated his commitment to professional best practices in advising the Macomb Park District to have been of great benefit in representing the residents of Macomb, Illinois. Whereas Commissioner Hemingway has diligently protected the Macomb Park District's financial resources in the best interests of the district's residents, constituents, and taxpayers. And whereas Commissioner Hemingway has given freely, generously, and selfishly of himself to promote the well-being of the Macomb Park District and the wider community of Macomb. And whereas Commissioner Hemingway will fulfill his term with the Macomb Park District on the 18th day of May 2021, the district being the better for his long service to it. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Macomb Park District, meeting in regular session this 20th day of April 2021. That said, Board does express its deep appreciation for John L. Hemingway's many years of faithful service to the Macomb Park District, its residents, and its constituents. That the Commissioners of said Board do hereby extend their heartfelt best wishes to him. And that the Commissioners of said Board wish to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting in commemoration of the action taken thereby. That being said, is there a motion to approve Resolution 21-5?
Make a motion to approve the amendment?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamage?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hemingway? Abstain. Got it. Commissioner Weiss?
Yes. All right. That being said, this resolution passed and became and become a part of the minutes of the April 2021 meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Macomb Park District. Commissioner Hemingway, would you mind coming this way? Would you like some assistance? We have someone to assist you.
We have a wheelchair? I think they want you to talk, John.
We could come to you if you'd rather.
I will come to you if you would like.
There'd be some people here who are pushing their luck. And you wonder why Neil's here. No, I wouldn't, the minute he walked here.
I'll come around.
Go ahead.
Oh, that's all right.
It's family.
Fascinated. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
By the way, Neil was here as security, in case you tried to run out.
It's interesting, if I may say so, because he fulfilled a similar role with another individual adverse to this.
You don't say.
Or do you think I got the idea? Okay.
I think it might be prudent, just for those who are not aware, that John has conveniently found his way out of coming to the main meeting due to another obligation. So this was our last opportunity to show our thanks and gratitude.
Yes.
Even if he hadn't, he probably wouldn't have shown up, so this was going to happen regardless.
I'm not sure what is on the rest of the agenda because my computer is not.
That's okay.
But at some point, I would like to.
You didn't get the real agenda, anyway.
I was going to say, you didn't get the real one, so it's fine.
It was doctored.
Well, I did the same thing to Ray.
Yeah.
But at some point, I would like the opportunity to make a few remarks, but I think that might go better at the end of the meeting than.
Well, we are at our last item on the agenda, which is the open Commissioner presentation and discussion.
Well, if there's anybody else that wants to speak and then, if there's anything that needs to come forward.
Well, I definitely want to say a few words. And because John is a person of very few words. When I first became real acquainted to him back on August of 2016, I believe, I started on this board. There wasn't anybody on this board I would look up to more than John Hemingway. Dr. Hemingway is a very dedicated person to the community. Has a lot of, had a lot of knowledge with the recreation parks out at the university. And I highly, you know, I highly appreciated the example that he gave. I'm sure he gave examples of prior Commissioners before I came in here advising them. I know, I remember Steve Horle said that, you know, John would be a character. And he is definitely one that keeps the board on their toes and well-informed of things to do. So I really, really want to thank you for the time that you've spent on the board and really have learned a lot from you on discussions.
Most appreciated. Thank you.
I'll be very brief. Dr. Hemingway, I've known Dr. Hemingway for a long time. First met Dr. Hemingway when I was working on my master's in RPTA here at Western. And I'll be blunt, he scared the bejesus out of me. Even though I am a full-grown man with children and have lived a life, he still scared the bejesus out of me. But once I got to know him much better, I had grown to appreciate and understand his unique style and mannerisms. And he, and one thing he could never hide is that he does care. And so you've helped me a lot in the transfer of being the lone cameraman running the meetings behind the scenes to being the, in front of the camera as Park Board President. And I appreciate you very, very much, and you will be greatly missed. Anyway. Would you like to say something, Rachel?
I would. I was going to let everybody else go first. Well, I will keep it brief for, but I've known John since my undergraduate, and he has been a mentor to me since day one. And I'm just very, very grateful. You've led me through a lot of difficult times and a lot of different transitions. And you always saw a certain amount of potential in me that maybe I wasn't even aware of. You love the game of chess, so you probably knew way far in advance of what I was capable of than I did. And I just, I'm very grateful for your continued guidance and support. And I'm still going to use your guidance and support, even though you're not a Commissioner, but you've been a vital piece of this board and a vital piece of this park district for quite some time. I'm just honored and blessed and very thankful to have you as a mentor in my life. So thank you for everything.
I'm honestly a little bit disappointed that I've only been on the board with you for one year. So I'm looking forward to getting to know you as a customer a little bit better these days. But thank you for everything you have done and showed us.
I'm going to do this because I would rather face people. Thank you all for your generous words for the resolution. I do not, in fact, recognize the person you're talking about. I think there has been a mistake made here, but I will accept it as in working to my advantage. I will say, first of all, thank you to the people of Macomb for having given me the opportunity to serve on this board. I have learned a great deal being here. It has been an immensely rewarding experience. Although I came to be on the board because a close friend of mine lied to me and told me it would only be one meeting a month. Why I am still a good friend with that friend, based on that, I don't quite know. Because after. Because after the first couple of months, it ran to several meetings a week. But each of those meetings contributed to the well-being of the board and of the community. And though we are often prone these days to perhaps make light of or make fun of that, it is absolutely essential that every person be a part of the community. And in some way, whatever each person's way is, work to make it better. Because unless we all are doing that, we will not get as far as we can. Absolutely convinced of the importance of parks and recreation in a community's life and its well-being, both holistically and its individual people. As I said, it's been most rewarding. I think that based on the work done by prior boards, because although the individual members of the board change, the board continues to exist. And that's as it, as it should be. Prior members of the board made sacrifices. The immediate previous director, Ray Peterson, did yeoman work in very difficult times to hold the district together. And put the district in a position to have seen the growth, the development that we have since Director Lenz has taken over. Director Lenz did mention something to me as I came into the room for this meeting that I will close with because there have been times when I wondered whether I would ever get to this point. And just to rub it in, I am not going to be able to be here at the May meeting for an absolutely wonderful reason that seems even more wonderful after today. I am, I am going to be accompanying a study group from Illinois College to Key West.
Rough life.
Remarkably enough, it's a Hemingway study group, which I find kind of amusing. But as I came in, Director Lenz looked at me and said, "Well, it's been snowing like crazy in mid-April, and it's your last meeting. Hell has frozen over." It does feel that very much. But I will, I will close with that simply by repeating my thanks to the citizens of Macomb for having given me this opportunity. My thanks to all of you and to past board members, to Director Lenz and to Director, former Director Peterson. I'll throw the shout out to Pat Stout, too, because I have seen his face across from me from so many meetings over these years. And somebody else and I are going to have a conversation later. But thank you. I have nothing but optimism about the future of this district with the present board and the present staff. Thank you again.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, God.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, it has been moved and seconded, all in favor.
In favor.
All in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we stand adjourned. I thank you all. And again, thank you very much, Dr. Hemingway.
Good stuff.
You're quite welcome.